And working on that. Mayor Ray Miller is here and let's talk about the city council meeting last night. I wanted to ask you, before you get into the agenda, there was quite a bit of discussion at the meeting last night. It wasn't anything that was on the agenda. So the council couldn't take any action on it, but do you want to kind of share with the folks what that discussion was about?
We wound up, obviously our meetings are open and we had quite a few folks show up. We had heard that there was probably going to be a crowd. So, I mean, and it's a thing where we're always interested to hear what folks have to say. But no one had requested an agenda item, but we always have a period to hear from visitors. And so we actually had several folks address the council and primarily it was in regards to the displays that have been at the library, both in the children and the teen section. And I think the stuff on Facebook had gotten very ugly and that's, that's very unfortunate. I mean, you know, I see our community as inclusive and respectful of one another's, you know, we all certainly have our particular beliefs and all, but you know, it's a thing where to basically, you know, be ugly in what we do on social media is very unfortunate because it tends to make folks more polarized instead of more together. But anyway, we had several folks who appeared in support of keeping the displays that have been up in those two sections. And many of them were very passionate about their feelings and stuff and the fact that folks should have the ability to see alternative views and perspectives and be able to have material related to that. There were some in the audience who actually were opposed to it. Only one of those folks actually spoke and he was very considerate of the other folks' feelings. And, you know, at the end of the evening, it was a thing where I think folks were able to vent some of their frustration with what had happened on social media. But it really wasn't, like I say, an agenda item. So council didn't have any option to actually do anything in either way type of thing. So it went, as I perceive, fine because it gave folks the opportunity to at least vent some of the frustrations and particularly with what had been posted on social media. But-
And the, and the display was Pride Month?
Well, it was, yeah, it was, the displays basically said, read with pride and then had a rainbow color. And so, you know, it's hard to argue that we aren't encouraging reading and that we're proud of kids who do read. But obviously folks see the rainbow and all now as being associated with the gay pride movement and all. So, you know, it was, and some of the books that were there in the display were topics that some found to be not what they wanted their children actually reading. But, you know, it winds up being a thing where we listened. Council had a few questions for some folks, you know, and I think we also tried to help the folks understand kind of the process in city council. It's a thing where many of these organizations have boards that interact with staff. You know, there was some discussion, I think, I don't believe the library board was aware of the display actually going to be set up before it was, you know, type of thing. And so they were caught off guard. You know, we then wind up in our structure, if something comes to council, if it's something that needs to be reviewed and discussed, usually if someone brings a topic to us, then we refer it to a committee that then spends the detailed time actually having discussion, talking to the folks, both either the staff or concerned citizens. You know, if a person has a complaint against an officer or one of our employees, then, you know, there is a committee that actually looks at it and listens to the person's complaint, listens to the department or the employee's response, you know, type of thing, and then basically brings recommendations to the council. So that basically-
And none of that had happened on this particular question?
None of that had happened on this particular issue. And also, it wound up being a thing where, and they were curious about how agenda items and when folks would know about agenda items. And so there was an exchange of information because basically, you know, we have a staff meeting on Thursday to look at what type of items that we have on the upcoming agenda for Tuesday night. And then our agenda by the Open Meetings Act has to be published on Friday as to what's coming up on Tuesday. So that folks who are interested have the ability to see what types of topics we're actually considering for consideration by councils. So that if they want to appear, you know, they're aware. And also it gives them an opportunity to talk to counselors and express their feelings before. Because a lot of times outside of the period for hearing from visitors, or if it's actually a public hearing, now if it's a public hearing, obviously they have the opportunity to address the council on that particular issue at that time. But, you know, if it's just a regular agenda item, we're not asking, you know, for audience participation, but it gives folks the opportunity to have visited with their counselors or all the counselors. Because, you know, I think on our website, all the counselors' contact information is available. And even though we have four districts and two counselors from each district, I see virtually all eight of our counselors as believing they represent the citizens of Artesia, not just their district. And they have the welfare of the entire city at heart, not just their district. And so as a result, it certainly doesn't hurt for someone to express their views to all the counselors instead of just the one or two in their district that they're aware of. But-
And this is all posted on the city's website on Friday?
It's posted on the city's website. It's posted on our door, you know, to give folks, if they don't have access to the website, they can come to the city and actually see what's scheduled on the agenda. But most of the times, our topics are so-
Mundane?
Mundane, I guess, that actually-
Routine, maybe routine would be a better word.
But I mean, you know, normally we have no visitors or, you know, only someone who has a particular request for an event or something that is coming up for approval.
Well, there's no question that particular topic, which has been in the news and it's been quite prevalent, does have passionate people on all sides of the issue. And in this particular case, all that they really could do is appear at the, at the visitors' portion of the council meeting and, and express their opinions at this point.
Express their thoughts and to a degree, express, I think a lot of them felt very discouraged by the amount of polarization and what was going on in the social media arena. That basically it doesn't help resolve issues and just makes folks, you know, actually have bad feelings for folks who are on the other side of whichever side of the issue they're on. But anyway, no, we actually started off the meeting with a much more kind issue. In fact, the first thing we did was, I had had a chance to visit with Mrs. Frazier, our policeman who had passed away. And she had expressed to me the fact that she was really appreciative of some of our staff who had gone above and beyond in trying to help her and her family cope through the loss of her husband. And so we gave a special thanks to Commander Chantel Longway, Commander John Beasley, Fire Marshal Brendan Harvey, and Fire Department Administrative Assistant Debbie Brazes. And those folks, you know, obviously, they were all close to Mr. Frazier and they felt the loss. But in many ways, they were doing things above and beyond what is expected in trying to help the family get through this time. And it's a thing where in the upcoming months and years, we need to help that family. It's a thing where they've had a tragic loss. I know that they have a strong church community around them, which is great. But it's a thing where anytime that we can help folks that have suffered a horrific loss at a young age, the more we can do, that's what a small community does for its family members. We all are part of this family here in Artesia. So anyway, we did thank, or we did recognize those individuals, and I'm sure they didn't do it for the recognition, but it's nice to be realized that what they have done is appreciated by the family. We wound up, we initially thought last Thursday that we would have fairly short agenda, but obviously with the visitors, that took nearly as long as our normal council meeting. And then we had several things that we had added. Fire Marshal Harvey actually gave an update on the interagency task force and what all they do, who all is involved in that, the number of fires and events that that group has worked on together, some of the different projects that they actually are involved in. And then in relation to the fires, you know, how many of them, I think 90 some odd percent of those fires have actually been determined as to the actual cause and all. So it's a thing where it's a very professional group of specialists from the different agencies that work together in conjunction to try to get further in-depth analysis than what any individual department might have the capabilities of actually doing. So that was a good report. They also asked that the council continue, or to approve a resolution as we have done for many years in the past, outside of the COVID year, when we didn't do anything. But we actually had approved a resolution that basically banned the use of personal fireworks and grills, except for gas grills at JCPark on July 4.
Okay.
And it's truly a thing where there will be a lot of folks at the park. And of course, we have, are anticipating the fireworks celebration that evening. And I know, and it's been, well, I guess I'm too old. It's been years and years and years ago. But I know that there was one year I can remember when folks were shooting off bottle rockets in the park at one another.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And as a result, it didn't feel real safe. But anyway, it's a thing where having that area, not have those type of activities is, is good, just because we want everyone to actually come out. Those that would like to sit and enjoy the beautiful display of fireworks in an area that they don't have to worry about being hit by some errant-
Something like that. Well, and it's been dry and the, you know, I know there's some watering that goes on out there, but it's still the area around it is, is dry.
And there, I'm sure the fire department evaluated the drought conditions because we have had some other regulations in years past that were more severe on limiting fireworks activity. But this was the only thing that they brought forward this year was just the one that relates to actually events at the JCPark during the 4th, you know, that restriction on the types of grills. And then also the restriction on no fireworks inside JCPark outside of the public displays. But that was good. And we, then we also had the police department, nothing exciting there. Community development had several items. We had a memorandum of understanding between us and the Greater Artesia Foundation over the management of the soccer football fields at JCPark that had been developed. And it had been worked on by all the parties involved. And this was the final form of the memorandum and the council approved it last night on behalf of the city, where I can now execute it on the agreement for the city's portion. There was also, as part of that agreement, there's a use fee schedule that will be done each year for the use of the facility out there. And unfortunately, they had not finalized that. And yet I know that they have some events that they're planning early in July out there. And as a result, what we asked the council to do is to allow Mayor Protim Hill, Raul Rodriguez, who's head of the Community Development Committee, as well as our member that serves on the Recreation Commission, and myself to have the ability to work with them to finalize a use fee schedule. And then that the council would actually then ratify it afterwards, but that they would allow us to actually negotiate and finalize where they could move forward with that without having to wait until the council met again. Because our next meeting falls, I think it's like the 13th of July. So it's a little later in the month than normal. And that way, if they have events before, they will have had approval for their use fee schedule if it's something that the three of us can agree with them on. So that was good. And then also, they, there was some discussion about cannabis retail that is coming next year. And the fact that the cities have the ability to put in statutes or ordinances in relation to some of the things, some of this stuff is pretty well outlined in the statute that is, was passed by the legislature. But then there are some options. And the thing is, if we're going to actually do something in the way of regulations here in the city of Artesia, it would be far better for us to do it early on. So that anyone who might be looking at setting up that type of business knows what they're dealing with before they, you know, wind up finding a location and then figure out that that location doesn't fit with what the city's contemplating in the restrictions around like schools and stuff. So-
So is the city, do cities have a local option, yes or no, on all of it? Or, okay?
No, they can't restrict the sale in the location or in the locality. In other words, we don't have an option to say, well, no, we're not going to allow it in the city. But then we do have some flexibility about what setbacks and different distances from different areas you may be able to actually set up in your ordinance. And so there's, it's all very new at this point to everyone. I know Jim McGuire, our head person, has been in touch with Roswell, the county, the city, also with Riodosa, to see kind of what their folks are working on. Because, you know, you hate to create the wheel. If someone else has already got a wheel, you may be able to modify their version and not have to do all of the creation yourself. And so, and I, but it's also a thing where we'd like to make sure that we're proactive and do it early enough so that anyone who's looking at that type of business would know what there are in the way of potential restrictions so that they don't contract for a building or something for a location, thinking it would work and then find out that the city's regulations don't allow that particular location to actually be eligible. So, but anyway, his committee will be working on that. And we told any of the counselors that have, you know, thoughts or input. And I believe the act is like 150 some odd pages. And it appears that just, you know, reading through it, that some of the sections almost seem to conflict with one another, you know. In one spot, it talks about 300 foot away from schools. And another spot, it talks about 1,000 foot away. And you go, well, you know, which is it? Is it 300 or 1,000?
I can't imagine that they would have passed something this year that was not quite complete.
That was not quite clear and easy to follow, yeah. But-
Okay. Well, can we take a break real quick? And we'll come back. We have the mayor with us, Ray Miller, and we're kind of recapping the city council meeting from last night. We're going to take a quick break and be back in just a moment. Don't go away.
Now for a Pickos Valley news update. I'm Jared Sorrello. Custodians of New Mexico's two multi-billion dollar financial trusts that underwrite public education and infrastructure spending are now weighing whether to give greater weight to issues of social responsibility and sustainability in investment decisions. The state investment council headed by Democrat Governor Michelle Lujan Grisham on Tuesday, kicked off deliberations about its investment strategies and a possible policy change to give greater consideration to a host of environmental, societal, and governance concerns. State health officials announced Tuesday that four people have each won $250,000 prizes as part of the New Mexico vaccine sweepstakes. They were the first four winners of Vax to the Max sweepstakes. The $10 million cash is funded by federal stimulus and intended to incentivize COVID-19 vaccines. Four vaccinated New Mexicans, one from each public health region of the state, are each confirmed winners of $250,000. You're up to date, I'm Jared Sorrello.
Need to ship a package? Choose UPS. Need to ship a package UPS from Artesia? Bring your package to Brown Drug. Brown Drug wants to be your UPS shipping center in Artesia. Use Brown Drug as your UPS shipping center and we'll reward you by shipping your 11th package five pounds or less for free. If you want to make sure your package arrives on time, use UPS. The easy and convenient place to ship UPS in Artesia is Brown Drug at the corner of Fourth and Washington.
Welcome to DSI, New Mexico's business technology leader. We help you digitally transform your business to do more, faster, and more secure. Selecting DSI gives you access to the world's best technologies, award-winning local technicians, and our commitment to the New Mexico communities we serve. One local source for all your technology products, services, and the personalized support you can only get from DSI.
It's time for the Eddie County Sports Report. We have survivors from yesterday's state softball and baseball playoffs. One team did not, but let's go to the scoreboard. For baseball action was Artesia winning at Santa Teresa in class four A by a final score of five to two. Josh Madrid, a junior for the Bulldogs, threw a complete game. And Artesia moves on to the next round. That'll be Thursday morning in Albuquerque against St. Pius. That game starts at 11. However, the Carlsbad baseball team fell at Hobbs yesterday in class five A by a score of four to two to end the season. In softball action, it was Carlsbad prevailing against Rio Rancho. Four to one was the final. They'll play Los Lunas Thursday night at 6:30. And Artesia in class four A beat Milwaukee easy, 14 to zero. They'll play Silver Thursday morning at 10 o'clock. The sports report brought to you by DSI. Call DSI for all your office technology needs. I'm Eric Butler at KSVP Radio, AM 990.
Welcome back here on the Good Morning Artesia Radio Show. We have Mayor Ray Miller with us and we're recapping the city council meeting from last night. And we were talking about the marijuana laws coming down from the state and how the city is starting to look at what options that the city has as far as regulating it. And so you got that ball rolling, if you will. What else did you guys talk about?
Yeah, infrastructure didn't have any agenda items. He did talk about all of the stuff going on on First Street. And it's a thing where there's a lot of activity and that's probably unless you just have to go on First Street, you may want to avoid. And part of it's on outside of town going north and all as well. So, but anyway, he was making folks aware of some of the stuff that was happening. One of the council members actually mentioned the fact that they were beginning to do some striping and all out east of town.
What?
Yeah, actually. Of course, you know, I'm not smart enough just to hush. I says, well, has anybody figured out what those fine concrete things that they've placed in a couple of spots in the middle of the thing are anything except a accident waiting to happen? Because I'm not sure why you put a small section of median in, in a particular area. Because, you know, in this day and age of distracted drivers, if someone hits that, I just see it as a loss of control and potentially resulting in a much worse accident than what might have happened if that wasn't there. But-
See, I haven't been out that way for a while, so I-
Oh, yeah. You need to drive just out to Riverside because there's one of them just beyond the bridge where they put in a nice little concrete section there for only a few hundred feet. And it's got a lip on it. I'm like, oh, this just looks like... But anyway, as I explained, I'm not a highway design engineer. So obviously they must be a lot smarter than I am.
I tell you, just to add another distraction, Joby and I were going down to Santa Teresa and coming out of Alamogordo on 54, there was a driver weaving all over the road. And they seemed to be stable enough that I went to get around them. And the lady is staring at her phone. The phone is in her face. So she's texting or doing something like that. And so we get, we get past her. Well, we made a couple of turns and the load in the back had shifted. And so I wanted to pull over to make sure, because we'd bought some things for Joby, not related to, to sports. So we pull off on the side of the road and we go check the load. Just then, that car-
Comes up.
Nearly plows into the, we're standing behind my truck. It nearly plows into us, weaves around, and then comes off on the side of the road. So, yeah, the fewer things that there are out there to distract people, it's, and we noticed that on all the road signs on the highways there in, in Sunland Park, basically Canatillo and that area of Texas, they have all the big highway signs. And almost every single sign had, its messaging was, don't text, don't text, don't text.
Yeah. Well, and the older I get, the less I need to do of any of that type of stuff, if it's not hands-free. But no, the good thing is, the newer vehicles, I mean, mine has all of it to where it's now on the radio. So if I want to answer a call, I can, but it's completely hands-free. The texts, if I want to look at them, they come up, I can push it. It reads them to me. It asks me if I want to respond, but I don't have to look at anything. It's all done verbally. And I can stay focused on the road. And if it's not that way, then I really don't need to do it.
Well, but the good advice here is if when you're going east of town, look for the, whatever those things are.
Oh, yeah. Look for the impediments to see if you can, and please don't try to ramp them.
Oh, gosh, that'd be a bad thing.
They look to me like they should be some really nice airborne or, you know, half of your vehicle in the air if you hit them at a high rate of speed. But anyway, I suspect at some point, they may remove those, but it'd probably be after a few accidents. But anyway, that was, like I say, we got a little off into a couple of rabbit trails last night. When we got to the city clerk, there were several items there. They talked about possibly changing or adopting a resolution that might actually compensate employees who retire for their accrued sick leave. And it's a thing where folks are able to accrue sick leave. We earn, I think, four hours every two weeks in sick leave benefit for our employees. But then they're limited to a total of 100 and something or some, some amount of sick leave. Once they have that amount, if they are not sick, then they actually don't accrue more. But then if they retire, at this point, they're not compensated for all of that accrued sick leave. So there was some discussion- was some discussion, but we weren't looking at the council taking action. I asked staff to actually look at the last two years, see how many employees had retired, what, if we had had this in place, what it would have cost us each year, because certainly it's a budget consideration. It's an additional benefit that would cost the city. And they were going to research that. I also suggested that if we considered it, that it wouldn't be adopted until July 1st of 22, simply because we have some folks who have announced retirement in the upcoming year. And it looks very self-serving, you know, almost conflict of interest if we enact something. It's kind of like, I think our municipal judge's salary has to be done before an election so that it doesn't look like we're just, you know, rewarding her, it's a her currently, but rewarding whoever the judge is for their service at the time. So the next item was, there was some discussion about possibly some changes in the bottom rungs of our police and fire salaries. We have done some salary surveys across many of the areas of, you know, our staff that have special skills, whether it be wastewater, water department, CDLs in the sanitation department, you know, to see how our salaries compare with comparable salaries in the surrounding communities and like services. And most of them actually were very in line with what similar pay is in other communities. Unfortunately, our police and fire beginning salaries are not up to standard. I take blame part of that for myself because what we have done before COVID in some of our salary increases was we just raised the employees' salaries by a percentage for all of the salaries of the existing employees. But we didn't look at moving any of our salary, beginning salaries or our categories of salaries, increasing those at the same time. And so as a result, our beginning salary rates for like certified police and certified fire are not competitive with what the surrounding folks. And so there's proposal to look at raising some of those beginning salaries and also some of the existing employees would be affected if they're fairly new into our system. But anyway, it was just a discussion item. We just wanted to talk about some of the numbers, get the idea in front of council. Those items will actually go before the budget and finance committee, which four counselors serve on it. Those type of things also would be directed to our personnel committee. And the good thing is that, and it's by accident, but four counselors serve on personnel, four serve on budget and finance, and they don't have any crossover between those two committees. So all eight counselors actually get to be a part of the discussion at the committee level and exchange ideas and discuss, you know, the pros and cons of it. But.
They all, they all just can't get together at the same time.
Yeah.
Because then you got a quorum.
Yeah, we can't have more than four, but it works out the way those two committees are structured to actually work well. There also was discussion about the Heroes Act, some of the funding that came in this last legislation from the federal government to the state. Some of it went directly to the large cities in the state. But then for the smaller cities, it was funneled through the state. And initially, they had told us that we'd receive half of it on June 22. Well, that didn't happen. But anyway, they do indicate that they have received the money from the feds.
Okay.
And that they have a requirement to disperse it within 30 days. And so we should actually receive funds in the next fiscal year or in July. Related to that, we, staff has looked at the requirements because there are a series of things that you can either spend it on, or if you have the loss of revenue during COVID from what you had pre-COVID, then you can actually use it just to replace your lost revenue. Staff had looked at the calculations of our base prior to COVID with the inflator index that was appropriate to be applied, then looked at what our revenue actually was this fiscal year in the COVID type of thing, and basically determined that our loss of revenue was substantially more. In fact, I think they calculated that it was like an $8 million difference in the amount of revenue that we're looking at is something over $2 million. And so as a result, given that, we can just, you know, take all of it and just show it as loss of revenue that is being applied to try to offset our budget shortfall that we anticipate for this year. So that's, it's a one-time only thing, but it's certainly nice that we actually will qualify for the full amount and can actually utilize it in that way. So.
What would the full amount be?
It's about two point, I believe it's 2.4 million or something.
2.4, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a sizable enough number that, you know, it really is a benefit for our budget. Of course, I think our initial estimate was another shortfall of three and a half to four and a half million or something. But obviously, this will certainly reduce how much shortfall we have. It's also a thing where we each year have to set our, in our resolution about our meetings, we leave the date of our second meeting in July open because we're obligated to submit our budget for next year in final form prior to July 31. Well, usually staff wants two or three days to make sure that they can get everything input into the state system. But then they also like to hold the meeting later in July so that they can try to have the best information before council actually finalizes the budget. Fortunately, this year, the way everything worked out, our regular meeting winds up being, would be scheduled for the second one on July 27, which is perfect because it allows staff to have the 28th, 29th, 30th, and all to actually finalize the budget. So we just went ahead and adopted this year that we would actually hold the second meeting on July 27 as we normally do. It's a thing where the only other item that was on is we received some write-up information, I think it was prepared by one of the staff at the city of Carlsbad that talks about some of the House Bill six changes that come in effect here in July 1. And some of the concerns that many of the municipalities in the oil field, both northwest and southeast have as to the fact of how much changes and potential loss of revenue they may have by some of the changes that come into play on July 1. And I provided that information in the council's packet. We talked about it a little bit because there's some discussion about should we have an outside firm, you know, do some studies of the loss of revenue. If we have significant loss of revenue by some of this, then appeal to the legislature this spring for help. Well, one of the, well, there's a couple of different things. One, I actually have a small oil and gas company and have looked at some of the folks that we utilize for services that are based here in Artesia at our locations. And what I found was that the two businesses that I looked at specifically, they were already charging the county rate for the services done at location. They only charged the city rate for services that were provided in their office, not out at the field. Many of the companies, I think, out of Hobbs and all have though been charging the city rate for all of their invoices. And then, you know, under this new regulation, it permits, or it basically says that they charge it at the location, the rate that's applicable to the location where the service is provided.
Ah.
And so Hobbs anticipates a huge loss in revenue by that. Now, at the same time, there are changes where we are expecting to receive internet sales, where people have products delivered to their house, they've paid a sales tax. Well, now we believe that if it's delivered herein to an Artesia resident, that then Artesia tax will be collected and paid to Artesia. So many of the communities actually believe that their gross receipts tax may rise because of that additional revenue source. But it's a trade-off balance. The other thing is that it's very difficult. Tax and rev is going through some changes. And so we're very concerned as to how good the information will actually be that you get. And you're always a couple of months behind. And so, you know, doing analysis on these first few months, two or three months after, when you actually get the data, trying to develop something intelligent before the legislative session might be virtually impossible. So I explained to council that at this point, I couldn't see us joining because they want to share the cost. Well, if I don't believe that there's a real benefit to the study at this point to, to show real numbers, then it's hard to get excited about paying for a share of cost, even if you're only a smaller percentage. But I want to make sure that before we're spending money, I truly believe that there's a realistic outcome that could then actually be utilized successfully for a possible change at the state.
Hmm.
The only other item we had was an executive session with some pending litigation and there was no action when we came out. So it was an interesting evening. We actually were there for a couple of hours. But as I also described to some of our visitors, the counselors don't just work, you know, for an hour twice a month.
Or two, or whatever.
They really, most of their time is spent in committee work. And then also, when someone contacts them with an issue, many times they try to make sure that, you know, whichever department is aware of this stuff, they follow back up with the citizen and provide them information of who to talk to, or, you know, follow up with what is, they find out. And so, I mean, truly, I, I have great praise for our counselors at this point because those guys do a great job.
Excellent. Well, Mayor, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it. As always, you always bring us up to date on what is, is happening out there with the council meetings. And I think it's a good educational piece if people do have questions about what goes on at council. You might want to go to the city's website, find out who your counselors are.
Right.
And, and get to know them and start the process of learning, learning about them and, and how they can answer questions and address concerns and, and things that you have with people. So I think that's a good educational way to start.
Well, yeah.
How to start interacting with the city.
A few people have told me that I'm an idiot and explained that I shouldn't be allowed to do my job. I've explained to them that we have an election coming up. If they live in this city, they're eligible to run.
They're eligible to run. That's right. Mayor, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. You have a great day.
You too.